Whatever you need, if you want to meet.
Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting. We are here at the Administration Building. It is Tuesday, September 10th at 6:30 PM, and we call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance to begin. So all will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're gonna begin tonight by having Terry Miller share with us some happenings in the Technology Department, if I've worded that right.
Thank you, President Jacob, Mr. Collins, Cabinet members, board members. I'm Terry Miller, Director of Technology and Information Systems for the School Corporation. I wanted to start this evening with what this topic is tonight, and that is recognition. I have invited members of my team to be here tonight. I have other information to share with you, and frankly, it doesn't happen alone. It takes a quality team, and I'd like to start with the recognition. David Way and Phyllis Savoy have what I call pawpaw duty tonight, and the worst day of pawpaw duty is still better than the best day at work. So I have no qualms with them with spending time with their grandchildren. Phyllis Savoy has just completed her 27th year of service for Fayette County School Corporation. David is on his 19th year of service. Tim Clausen, Tim, you're here. Inclusive of his one year as a Career Center intern, Tim is coming up on his eighth year of service. Brennan Shelton is coming up on his sixth year of service, inclusive of his one year as a Career Center intern to the technology team. Caleb Jordan is starting his fifth year of service, and Jonathan Colley was an addition in January of this year and has been a great contributor to the team. I also have here tonight our two interns. They're seniors at Connersville High School, Ethan Glass, and Austin Wilmington. If you two will come up, please. I asked them to come so they could just take a moment and share with you what their experience has been. They have been working in our team for three months now, and also any of their observations about the new Chromebooks we're using.
Sure. I'd like to start off by saying that so far, my experience with the internship has been very knowledgeable. It's been teaching me a lot about things in tech that I had no idea about before.
I'd like to say that along with the newer knowledge, it's also given me work experience, which is really helpful. You would not believe some of the problems I've had to solve. Some are very simple, others are very complicated, but at the end of the day, I absolutely love my internship and would like to pursue a career in technology later.
I myself, I'm very thankful for having this internship because I've also learned a lot, and I started out pretty much not knowing what I wanted to do, but I knew I wanted to do something in the IT field, and through this, I wanted to, I found out what I wanted to do, and I've learned a lot.
Great, great.
Thank you, Charlie. Please, a round of applause for my entire team.
No, that's okay. Maybe we'll ask you to come back.
Well, to start off with a little bit of history, a good indicator of what technology has grown over the course of the past seven years. This is a representation of our bandwidth, our network growth since 2012. When I first arrived, our internet connectivity was 30 meg per second, supporting over 3,800 students. The elementary connections only had three meg connections, and the middle school had 100 meg connection. That was costing us over $3,000 a month. We have proceeded over time to increase our internet bandwidth. You can see we stepped up the blue bars, 150, 200, 300, and then last year, we moved to 1,000 meg or one gigabyte connection for the corporation, upgraded all the elementaries to 500 meg connection, and the middle school to a one gig connection. That is also based on, in 2017, I brought before the board a reference to $420,000 in funding that we received from the E-Rate program. If you're not familiar with the E-Rate program, just look at your cellphone Viz bill and that thing that says Universal Services Fee. That fee goes to E-Rate, which funds technology for schools and libraries. We are in a five-year cycle, so we did that in 2017, and we can't pursue it again until five years from, five years from 2017, so 2023. E-Rate funding is based on free and reduced participation in the lunch program. One thing, a couple of things to note, there's an organization, association called the State Education, it's State Educational Technology Directors Association, and in 2014, the association defined that you should have 100 meg of bandwidth for every 1,000 users. Now, users are inclusive of students and staff. So in 2014, we were 150 meg, when in theory, we should have been at four gigabits. Four gigabit? No, 400 meg, sorry, 400 meg. We should have been at 400 meg. So we progressed to the point where we were getting close to that number. Well, in 2017, '18, we're sitting at 300 meg, and the association came back and said you should have one gig for every 1,000 users. So we should have been at that point, four gigabytes. Okay? We look at today, we're at one gigabyte. So we should have capacity for, we should be looking at technology that is four times greater than what we currently have. The association recently came out with information that indicates your internet connectivity should be 10 gigabytes for every 1,000 users. That's 40 times higher than the number you see right here. So where are we at? Where are we going? Well, this is the last two weeks of internet activity for the corporation, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I know the printing's a little small. The yellow line represents the 95th percentile, so 95% of the time, we're below this line, and that line is 275 meg. So right now, we're using less than 30% of one gig. So am I worried about the fact we're not four gig? No, I'm not. You see that we have some spikes where we create a utilization of up to 400 meg. So obviously, where we were sitting at 300 meg, we'd been pushing the envelope from two years ago. So that's why we're at, at the stage we're at right now. And we continue to monitor and make our assessment of what our bandwidth needs going to be in the future. The previous slide showed that we started in 2012 paying $3,000 a month for all that connectivity, and if you noticed on the line graph, we're now paying $2,900 a month versus when we were a couple of years back, we were paying $3,900 a month. So we're doing more with less. We're saving, we've saved about $1,000 a month. So where does, where does Fayette County fall in the overall aspect? 293 districts, corporations file an annual tech plan, and of those who filed, of the 293 filed, only 16 are above one gigabit. Okay? So we're in the pool of the 277 that are still less than the defined standards for the, by the association. Furthermore, that puts us at 250 meg per 1,000 users, when the recommendation is, at this point, one gig per 1,000 users. And you can see that of the, well, the state plan from 2019, that puts us about middle of the pack. There are 113 corporations that are about, around that 250 meg per 1,000 users. So we're in the middle of the pack. So the $420,000 E-Rate fund helped us build our capacity, and then we implemented on that, so we didn't put the cart before the horse. We didn't upgrade our internet till we knew we were going to be able to deliver high-speed internet to every classroom. And based on that infrastructure build-out, it gave us an opportunity to reevaluate our telephone system. So our telephone system, David doesn't even remember when it came in. It's gotta be, do you remember?
2003.
Okay. Pushing 30 years. And it was based on copper, and I don't know what your experiences are with telephone service in Fayette County, but the investments we've made, we had more faith in our own fiber optic network to run our telephone system. So we are kind of our own little telephone company now. And in doing so, and switching to fiber optic-based for our phone system, which is called a voice-over-IP system, we reduced our monthly expense of approximately $5,500 a month down to about $2,500 a month. So we were saving an additional $3,000 a month on telephone communications. There is opportunity still to reduce that further. Talk about Chromebooks real quickly. The high school has retired their iPads after five years of use, and after a survey conducted by Mr. Judd of students, graduating students and staff, and some evaluation with the Technology Committee, they opted to move to the Chromebooks. It's the same model you have sitting in front of you. We deploy, we deployed about 950 of them in less than 45 minutes on the first Monday of the school year, August 12th, and we've deployed about 50 plus or minus more since then. So we have about 1,000 Chromebooks available at the high school. You'll notice over here on the right, there's a cart, a cart of Chromebooks. We make those available for students to check out in event of forgot the Chromebook, or students who participate part-time at the high school who don't require one all day long. So the number here important to remember is the 1,000. I'm gonna take you to a live presentation here. For the first time, we now know how these devices are being used in the school corporation. Today, there were 824 users out of that 1,000 Chromebooks that were deployed. That's pretty consistent. We, on a daily basis, we're above 80%, up to 85%. Why not 100%? Well, the device isn't used in every day in the classroom, plus you have absences and... So, so this is the first evidence we have of how the technology's being used in educational purposes. We have 59,000 websites visited, we've had 1,000 blocked, 22,000 searches, and 1,000 videos. The interesting part is at the bottom, 38% were activities related to education, 36% were activities related to searching, so finding knowledge for the content of their course, 17% miscellaneous, so about 7% YouTube, and less than 1% in communications.
So that searching could be education.
And YouTube.
YouTube?
Yeah. You wanna know how to do something, find a YouTube video, it'll tell you really quickly.
These are active links, and I was just gonna show you. I'm going to be very cautious about what I do click on here, because this is a recorded board meeting, and I don't want to expose student personal information in the presentation. So we're gonna look at some, some high-level things here. So Google, 645 user day. Google Docs, 352. Google Docs is equivalent to Microsoft Word. It's what they do their papers in. IXL is the math for the high school, 345, 195 YouTube users. So just look at this top, top 10 list, you know? GIMKID is an actual interesting game. If, I'm a fanatic, I play the game HQ Trivia on my phone every night, and GIMKID's very similar to that. The teacher creates a trivia-type application with content related to their subject, and the kids participate, and they receive dollars, fake dollars, and they can use those dollars to power up and do other opportunities with it. So you can look at the top 10, you know, this is education-oriented. We go back and take a look at videos. Sort this by number of users. This was a video Mrs. Geistin used today in the media center and had her students participate with. Yes, you're going to find some one-offs in here. I'm not gonna scroll down very far, but the students use them for educational purposes as well as during the SRU period, they'll use it for some entertainment as well.
Nice job.
That was for sorrow.
Sorry.
Top searches, GIMKID I mentioned to you, calculator. They're always after, they're always after other forms of entertainment that we block. And again, the top websites, very much oriented to educational purposes. And lastly, the teachers have access to something called Relay Classroom. By class period, we have an interface with Power School, and it maintains their roster by period, and they can actually look at the students in their classroom, look at what their searching activity is, they can lock them into a website, they can look at their screen, they can see what they're doing on their screen, and provide some classroom management of the technology to be sure that they're on task. I thank the board for all your support in the past. I look forward to more opportunities to introduce technology and opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Very informative.
Thanks for sharing how much we appreciate Terry and his team. I think we are as progressive as most districts do define, and that's through leadership and planning and great work by his team. So thanks, Terry, and your team.
All right. We will move on to asking for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted in the mic. Hi, Sonja. Thank you. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of, excuse me, 8:13:19, and the public hearing of 8:26:19. Personnel report, retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera, and the approval of the August 2019 claims, number 54068 through 54322. Seeing the consent agenda, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll now go on to the action items personnel reports, recommendations for employment. Mr. Hensley.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Ms. Jacobs. Thank you. Several recommendations for employment this evening. First one on your packet is Seth Eversole. He's the adult education welding instructor. He's gonna be at the Career Center and also at the Ivy Tech campus. For classified staff, we have Barry Foal as a bus driver. Jameson Homeland is gonna be a co-op for the maintenance department. Catherine Leach is a Head Start Education Assistant for Fayette Central. Jason Pennington is going to be a split custodian with Frasey and the maintenance department. Ashlyn Pope, Nutrition Bus Assistant for Maplewood. Shannon Smith, an Education Assistant for St. Gabe. Leanna Watts, a Nutrition Bus Assistant for Maplewood, and Jennifer Waterman, a Nutrition Bus Assistant also for Maplewood. And for your extracurricular, we have Jema Bauer as a Department Head for the White Water Career Center. Cody Smith, the Boys Junior varsity basketball coach, and Megan Veeneman, the junior varsity girls volleyball coach.
All right. Thank you, Brian. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make that, excuse me, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll now move on to the Teacher Retirement Fund Resolution. Ms. Callan-Tollet.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. During the last legislative session, the governor suggested, and the legislature approved, the use of some rainy day, state rainy day funds to pay down the pension debt for teachers. The rate for schools, for teachers in what's considered the new fund, those hired in 1996 and later, dropped from 7.5% to 5.5%. Well, legislators might not have trusted that schools would be judicious with these savings, so they are requiring all school corporations to pass a resolution indicating what they're going to do with this found money to their budgets. So our resolution, as many others, indicates that it will be used to pay for increased costs in our education fund and/or to replace revenues that are lost due to declining enrollment or items that are impacted in the education fund. So I'm not sure what they thought we were going to do with that money, because these expenses are part of the education fund, because it's pension retirement for teachers, so it would remain in those funds, but they want us to pass resolutions, so we're giving you one to consider.
Well, thank you, and we will oblige. Thank you, appreciate it. I'd like to entertain a motion for the Teacher Retirement Fund Resolution, so we're doing what we need to be doing.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're just gonna stay with Ms. Callan-Tollet for the CHS Office Recommendation.
Yeah. As you recall, in June, we rejected the bids for the complete project for the high school office part of the project, which is separate from the field house. Previous to that, we had included adding some structure for that office and the roof. The bids came in much higher than we thought for the finishing of that area, so we went back, worked with the architect to get some components, pricing for some components as a change to the field house project, if you will, and then leaving some of the work that we thought we can contract out ourself. So what, we have worked through those added things, taken things off. We now have pricing from Brunz-Gutswiler to complete the enclosure of the exterior shell, to make the access from the existing building, the art area, into the new area, do studs and door frames. We have doors left over from a previous project that we're gonna use, so they're gonna put the walls up, not drywall them, they're gonna put the frames up, and we'll finish it. The Brunz part of the project would be $1,1,448. Koch Mechanical, who is our mechanical engineer on the field house project, has given us a price of $67,590 to do ductwork, VAV piping, controls, and then the balancing of the system. There will still be some work to be completed by us. And then Burchard Electric is the electrical and fiber contractor for the field house project, and they have given a price of $4,927 to get electrical in there. That's all. Not even, we might get one light, so we can see the hangs of drywall, but very minimal. So in an effort to save money and yet keep this project moving forward, it is our recommendation that you approve the, this scope of work to be completed by these contractors.
And up on the screen, ignore the blue, that's, that's part of the field house construction, the athletic office, but that's just the only slide I could find that had that picture, so it's all the blue between the field house and the existing building, so that's a reference of what we're talking about with this office, and all those room will be bringing in, even the ceiling tile grid, right? It's part of that metal.
Yeah, the grid, so the mains and the costumes would be installed after the wall gets installed, and we would just have to drop in the ceiling tile.
So, I don't know what kind of a question this is, not dumb, but so finishing the area, you have all those things that would be needed, and is there a timeframe? Is there a thought about when there will be money to complete those things, or what's the thought?
Well, not knowing what they're gonna cost. I believe we'll have, as Mr. Collins shared with you in his Friday letter, we received the state grant, and that's gonna cover the gate. That was $87,000 that we thought was going to come from some of these monies that we had reserved. You know, I kinda keep track, I don't know if I have it here, but of the plus and the minus of the bond money that's remaining, we, while we had an unsuccessful drill at Fayette Central, the bill was not as much as we thought. We had not, already not spent all of those bond proceeds, so we have some of that money left to put towards this project. We have the gate savings. We committed about a million and a half, up to a million and a half, from our rainy day fund for the field house or this project. With some of those various savings, I believe we could have covered the $420,000, but we didn't. didn't think that that was a good idea. We thought we could get a better bargain by doing tile and carpeting and drywall and some of these other things on our own, or doing them ourselves, or contracting them local. So can I guarantee that there's going to be enough money in those pools? No, but I think we'll be able to keep the project moving forward fairly quickly. You know, we had, as frequently happens when you use an architect, they design a really fancy reception desk. Well, we probably aren't going to have a really fancy reception desk. We'll have a nice one, but it's not going to be custom cabinetry built into the area. You know, we will make do with maybe some Corian tops and some regular cabinetry to scale back the scope of this and be a little more judicious with our funds. I mean, I'm not complaining. Don't think I'm complaining about what architects do. That's what they do, but sometimes it might end up being a little bit more than we really need, and so we're trying to be responsible with the funds we have, and I'll continue to monitor all of that as we go through and add parts and pieces to this.
And we have the capability in-house with the maintenance crew that we have to complete everything that's not listed there, so the drywall, we probably said about the drywall finishing, but the plumbing and electrical and the flooring, like Janie said, we can do that either in-house with local vendors, so.
In-house, we flow it down some, where, you know, if you work with a contractor, they're going to bring three or four plumber guys working for them plumbing, they do it. You know, you might have one or two guys. We know, all of our guys can't go work on that for an entire week and leave our other buildings, so we're going to try and balance all of that with, you know, yeah, we can do it, but can we do it timely?
So we're going to use, be able to reuse some of the things that we already have with the doors and the like, so that's going to be some savings. And then from what I added up very quickly, what the, that was still considerably less than the 400 and some thousand dollars that was, that we turned down back in June. I was, I think, was it what you gave us, Jane, was that?
Four twenty.
Was, was under, but what you just told us, wasn't that under about $200,000?
It is less than 200,000.
So it's less than half?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we don't think it'll take another 200,000 to finish all of this, so.
I just appreciate your diligence, taxpayer dollars and the grant for the gate. That was the highlight of the Friday letter as far as I was concerned, so I appreciate your efforts a lot.
She's the grant writer on that.
Oh, my God.
It was painful.
It was. They changed it. I think it was painful for the state too, but yeah.
And when we say using things that we have already, we're not talking about stuff that's been in storage for 25 years. We did a, we did a large door project at the high school just over, just last summer, and some of the doors, some of the, they cut the hinges wrong, basically, so we had, those doors are solid, very, very, very expensive doors that we had that we can use, so, you know, we're not just taking the old stuff that we've, we've put to the wayside and going to throw it in there, so.
Like what's in my garage.
Yeah, so just wanted to clear that up.
It'll be a nice facility that we'll be proud of.
You're not taking all the carpets, whores from all the buildings, the ones you have in storage to make a calico hat.
So we believe we'll see some substantial savings by doing this and working locally with some of our contractors too.
So the granite countertops are out. We'll have to deal with the, the Corian?
Yes, but I don't know if you ventured into the restrooms outside of Weiss Auditorium, but we put Corian countertops in there, spruced it up. It really looks nice.
The vermicah is gone? Oh, my.
I think we're going to put a fresh coat of paint over fall break in those restrooms and really, and maybe some lighting to get some of the old lighting out of there and really make them look nice, but yeah.
The vermicah's gone. Oh, my gosh.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm not.
Thank you very much. Okay. May I ask for a motion to approve the CHS Office recommendation?
I so moved.
Thank you, Anne. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to Ms. Colin Tollack with the request for approval of the softball field LED lighting.
Yeah. Oh, we're going to get you fillin' me by the time the news over. So as part of the capital projects plan, every year, a portion of that goes to athletics. The large ticket item included in the plan for the 2019 budget was lighting, athletic field lighting. So Mr. Duncan did his due diligence, got his quotes, looked at lighting at other locations, and we are recommending proceeding with Custer Electric for LED lighting, $130,425 for the softball field.
Both the JV and the varsity.
It's just the varsity.
That's just the varsity. Okay, they're contiguous.
It's a lot.
They're contiguous to one, that's why I was asking.
And there's always lighting to be done. They want lights on softball. They want lights on baseball. I mean soccer, I'm sorry, soccer and baseball. Baseball's going to be really expensive and it's going to exceed their annual allocation, so I'm not sure how we're going to eat that elephant, but someday.
I have a question about the softball lights, maybe for Brian, I don't know, but when we put those lights up, can the pole be okay for lights to face the soccer field as well?
Mark, I really can't answer that question. I don't know.
You know what I'm talking about, just have a pole, lights this way, lights this way.
Yeah, I don't know if one set facing the soccer field would, would light it up enough, but I'm not, I'm not a lighting expert.
I'm just thinking it'd be a big help, you know, we're not putting lights on the soccer field, but if we could have a pole, it's going to be, you know.
I asked Brian, I think about that same question, and I think they're going to set it up so we could add lights.
Right. That's what I wanted to know.
On both sides, because the other, if we flip that softball field or we wanted to do lights on it, we would already have a pole. I believe Brent was the one who mentioned that, that that was something that could pop, but don't quote me on that.
Just save us, save us later if we ever go there.
It's expensive with this light.
Yeah.
What, are there any ideas of LED lighting when we have put it in before, particularly in the buildings, has caused us some cost savings as far as, as energy wise? Is this LED lighting going to give us any, do we have any idea how much cost savings the LED lighting on the athletic fields is going to do or no?
Well, I don't know because we're, I mean, obviously this is a field that's never had lights before, so we're going to be using more power than what we've ever used, right? So, so there really won't, there's not going to be any savings just because it's LED.
But it's more efficient power.
Right.
Than if we were to not use the LED lights.
Right.
There are no rebates for it because we're not replacing any existing ones.
Okay, yeah, because when we've done that before, we've replaced existing lighting, like in the Spartan Arena.
Right.
We replaced it with the LEDs and it was a cost savings and a lot better lighting.
Or the tennis court lights LED.
They are.
And those, I don't know, we could probably look at, that's probably been substantial with the savings compared to the old ones, so long-term they will be.
When we do move to the baseball field, we'll really, yeah.
Well, that's when you could tell.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. I'd like to ask for a motion to request the approval of the softball field LED lighting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, on this next tiny print item, it's the school board policy waiver of the first and second reading of policy 3.25, which is the teacher appreciation grant. I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Collins explain a little bit about that, and then we're going to discuss how we do our motion for this.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs Board. In 2017, we were required, we received teacher appreciation grant money from the state, and the state provided some strings that were attached, imagine that, and part of that was we had to develop a policy that met the requirements for the state guidelines. So those requirements included that teachers who are highly effective or affected on their most recently completed performance evaluation worked for us for 120 days at least last, the year before, and then they were employed on December 1st of the year that we received that, so they would have to be employed that December, so this coming December. The other requirement was that highly effective teachers were to receive a stipend of 25% more than given to effective teachers. The past two years, we've asked the board to offset that after our negotiations are completed, and that may be something, Mike, we'll bring that to you again later this, this fall. And then we are to distribute the funds within 20 business days after the Department of Education sends those monies to us. Well, last year, we operated under the rule that if you had it in place already, a board policy, you didn't have to bring it to the board again. Will the states change that again? So we need to bring it back to you. So this policy is unchanged from the September 2017 policy. The only change is we've added 9, 10, and 19 at the bottom, and we need for you to approve the same policy again, and I am asking for you to waive the second reading of this policy as is our normal practice, so I would ask for a motion to waive the second reading of the teacher appreciation grant policy and approve the teacher in one motion, if you would like to do that.
Since it's the same policy, we've just added the date, so put that in mind.
Any questions on that?
Yeah. So we're asking for a motion to waive the second reading and, at the same time, approve the teacher appreciation grant.
I so vote policy.
Whatever she said, I move that.
Yes. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And we will move on to our discussion items, and we will have our big discussion item being the public hearing on the 2020 budgets with Ms. Colin Tollack.
Thank you. I know you own this chair. I'm sorry, excuse me. Otherwise, we've got to be on the floor. I know you guys have waited all year.
We are so excited.
All year.
Bated breath.
Yes, I am sure.
Multicolored wraps, wow.
Yeah, so before I get started though, you know, I know what I'm saying, but if you have any questions, stop me so I can address them as we go through where the appropriate slides up or. But this is sort of, we're doing it a little bit different life this year. In the past, we've had a budget hearing, or a budget workshop, if you will, in August, where we talked about the budget a little bit, and then we repeated a lot of that information at the September Board meeting, where you have your public hearing and you allow for input from the community on the budget. This year, we're going to kind of bundle them together, so here we go. I just wanted to do a little backup and refresher for the board. If you remember, prior to 19, 2019, we had all these different silos of money. You had the general fund, the capital projects fund, the transportation fund, the bus replacement fund. We've really kind of moved away from all of that into just the education and the operation funds. So, you know, probably one more year, we may talk about that, but then we'll move away from that. We'll have enough experience. In the education fund, these are where we pay for the expenses related to student instruction or athletic coaches. We include in there the technology that is specifically related to students and classroom staff. That, that technology component used to always be a part of the capital project. The operation fund is now in terms of carrying out our capital projects plan, our transportation costs, the bus replacement plan, expenses that are allocated to overhead and operations, human resources, payroll, accounts payable. Those are considered operational expenses. It basically replaced the capital projects, the transportation, the bus replacement, and any operational type expenses like custodians and maintenance that used to be in the general fund. Look here too, now, it's not on this slide, but they talk about a lot that 85% of the money should go towards education and 15% towards the operational expenses. So in the education fund, this used to be in the low 90s, it is now jumped up to almost 100% of the revenue in the education fund comes from our student enrollment generated fund. The basic grant, the amount that we get for every student, has actually increased for 2020 and will increase again a little bit in 2021 to $5,548 per student. The bad thing for us is going to be that we're going back to two count days. We will receive funding for July through December of 2019 based on our enrollment this Friday, September, the second Saturday, or second Friday after Labor Day. Then they will take account in February, and that will drive the amount of money that we get for the second half of the year, so for January, second half of the school year. We used to have what's called the complexity index, and it was a separate calculation from the basic grant payment, and it was based on our TANF and food stamp participation on October 1 of even numbered years. They are now rolling that into our basic grant amount. For Fayette County schools, it's about an additional $962 per student. In addition to that, we receive special education funding, career and tech program funding, and summer school, and that's about it that goes into the general urban education fund anymore. Want to talk, you know, I've shown this slide many times about what our enrollment is doing. When I came in 2010, we had 3,777 students on our count. During 2010, kindergartners were counted as half, so really, today, our kindergartners are counted full. That number in today's world would have been 144 higher. Our estimated for September of this year is $3,173. When you're talking about $6,500, $6,600 a student, that's a lot of annual income that we have lost. Wanted to talk a little bit about the impact of our February count. So between September of '16 and '17, we were down 62 students. '17 and '18, 58 students. Last year, 51 and a half. If we decline 50 students between September and February 1, our funding on an annual basis would decline 325,000. For that half of year, we're going to lose $162,750.
I have a question. Obviously, they went over to the two, like you said, the two time counts for this year, and obviously it was because some school corporations around maybe the Indianapolis area were increasing quite a bit.
Carmel, Hamilton, Southeastern, Noblesville, you know, Bryan-Bosman's area.
Okay, so, but statistically numbers, they're a percentage of more corporations that are decreasing enrollment by that time than there are increasing, but yet the state still decided to do a two-day count regardless of that. Okay.
And districts don't hire mid-year when they go up. I was in a district like that, just like we can't.
Terminate someone's contract mid-year.
Cut staff in the middle of the year, so.
There's nothing they could do anyway.
No.
It's a formality.
But the pressure is from the doughnut counties in Indianapolis.
I'm sure there's quite a large few donors there to, so.
My problem with this is the early graduation. I mean, that's a good thing for the kids, but it's financial. I mean, that's a good thing for the kids, but it's financially not a good thing for us. And, and...
How many do we have that actually graduate early, mid-year?
Early.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like a handful or more than a handful?
I'd say we're nearing 20, 20, 25.
Is there anything, and this is a stupid question, I realize, is there anything that we can do to try to encourage these students to take some more classes or do something to stay that extra half a year? Are they just so glad to be out that that's, I want out, I'm finished, I've done what I need to do?
Well, early graduation also includes three-year graduates. They're a $4,000 mixed payments scholarship for those kids if they graduate in three years.
Ah.
So, yes, we try to get them to stay, but when they have their parents behind them, well, it's a family decision.
It's a hard one.
Sometimes they go straight to college, sometimes they go to work. Their life plan.
It's a mixed bag.
If we look into the taxing funds, wanted to talk a minute about assessed valuation. This shows the historical picture of our assessed valuation. Ours has really been fairly consistent. $690 million. They're projecting growth of 700 to 780 million. I'm a little surprised by that. We'll see if it really comes in at that high or not. Some of it could be driven by the good real estate market and some growth there, the valuation of the houses. But I, I'm concerned that that's a little bit high. So as always, as we've always talked about, I use a lower assessed valuation than I think it really possibly could be, and advertise higher rates related to that. So, so the word color. Also kind of want to point out, this is the same information, but this per acre assessed valuation, we peaked in 1415 at just over $2,000 an acre. That has been coming down. This is the last scheduled year for a decline in the per acre assessed valuation. It'll be down to $1,560. I would be surprised if Farm Bureau doesn't start lobbying again for another reduction in that, but time will tell. But this is the last year of the scheduled reductions.
So the per acre assessed valuation at Farm Bureau, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because obviously, yeah, it's going up, but yet the assessed value is going down.
Yeah, it's going down. So it peaked here. It, it went up. And there's this complicated formula that only, I forget his name now. Oh, economist from Purdue.
Larry.
Larry DeBoer. Yep. And then it peaked up here, and then it started coming, they started lobbying for some change in the methodology that was used. And those reductions have been pulling it down, so.
Luckily, our operations fund is based off of the 2019 numbers, is that correct? The assessed value there, what were the?
It's 2019 paid 2020, which is at the $1,560 per acre, which was a drop from last year of 60.
But what I'm saying, even though it's going down as assessed per acre, the
Assessed valuation going up.
So basically, we have a higher.
Something has compensated for that. So the, the first tax levying fund we'll talk about is our debt service fund. We currently have the QSCAB. Our final payment for it is in December of 2020. We have the middle school lease rental payment, which was, I have no idea how long that lease term was, but it is the gift that keeps on giving. I think we talk about that all the time. It'll, it was here when I came, and it'll be here when I'm gone, paying that off. So we do have the general obligation bonds that we issued in 2018. Those were on a short return for payback. They'll pay off in 2021. And then we have the drawdowns that we're doing for common school loan for the fieldhouse project. We still have about $1.1 million, no, $1.5 million to draw down from the state. What I will likely do is defer that last drawdown to the very end of the project or the end of the two years that we had to draw it down to push that start of the repayment to this date out into late 2020 or early 2021. What that does is it helps us keep our debt at a consistent level a little bit longer. So. Our current appropriation built into the budget for the debt service is just under $1.9 million for this next year. It includes things like the unreimbursed textbook. We actually had a drop in the unreimbursed textbook of about $19,000. We also carry $8,000 in temporary loan interest in case we would not get our settlement timely. We've not used that in years. So I don't really expect we're going to use that. What happens with that is I eliminate that appropriation when they work the final budget with the DOGF, and then that goes back as available cash balance to pull that down a little bit. And then we have some bond administrative fees in our continuing disclosure requirements with the federal government that are paid out. Here is our history of debt since 2010. You know, that target mark is between $1.9 million and $1.95 million is where we need to stay to be pretty consistent in our annual debt levy so that we don't harm any of the other governmental entities or ourselves by peaking our debt needs. All right. Moving on to the operations fund. The lion's share of our money for that fund comes from property tax collections, some money for license exercise, commercial vehicle, financial institution. We receive some money for interest income, and we receive the transfers from the education fund, which if you recall, last month, we changed to be 15% of the state support that was provided to us that month. Operation fund expenditures include our transportation costs, our bus purchases, capital projects, all the support services of payroll accounting, administration, custodial, and maintenance. Our capital expenditures in the operations fund, sports facility is limited to 2.7% of the property taxes levy for the operations fund. That generally runs about $155,000, $160,000. Is all we can spend on athletics from our capital projects fund. The plan, it's, the plan is required to identify items of $10,000 or more. However, if you reviewed your materials or what we put on the website, we include all of our anticipated capital projects in there to provide the whole picture like we used to of what our capital expectations are.
So when you talk about baseball lighting, that's the figure you were referring to?
If we do amendments during the year, they have to go through the whole board approval process and be posted on the website in public input taken on changes to our capital projects plan. Vehicle purchases were not allowed from the capital projects fund, but now they have become a part of the operations fund. So when we purchased vehicles for maintenance or, or transportation mechanics, those came from the, either the general fund or the transportation fund. Those are now a part of the operations fund. The instructional technology, again, has been moved to the education fund, but all other types of technology remain in the operations fund. The plan is posted on our website. There's no legal advertisement of the full plan. All we did was advertise that we were holding a public hearing on the capital projects and the bus replacement plans at this, this season. Transportation expenditures include the day-to-day operations, bus drivers, bus assistance, mechanics, fuel, tires, insurance. The purchase of buses and mini buses. We are required to have a five-year plan for our buses to be purchased in the future, into the future. The plan is published on the website. And again, no advertisement. All right. Now I kind of want to talk about the 2019 to 2020 budget. So our approved budget for last year was $34,750,000. Our proposed budget for this year is $35,408. I really expect more of what's going to be approved is going to be closer to this $33,700 mark. Why? This, this slide is in here twice. Because if you don't get anything else out of what I tell you, I need you to understand the circuit breaker or the property tax caps are going to be a huge problem for us. We, in 2018, we levied, said we needed, did not get $1.2 million. This year, that amount is expected to be $1.3 million. Next year, the projected amount is $1.5 million.
And you're saying this is what we need in our operations fund, that is the property tax component?
Yes. This, this is what won't be collected.
Won't be.
Will not be.
It could have been if we didn't have property tax.
If we did not have the cap. Yeah. So you, you look right there, you know, in, in two years, 19 and 20, you are almost at $3 million. If you look, it's 16% of our total budget. Okay, that doesn't sound very much, but that entire amount of the property tax cap goes to your operation fund. So when you look at, we levied $6.2 million. We are not going to collect $1.3 million. We're only going to get about $4.9 million of what we said we needed. Just how much? I started doing some figuring. How much is $1.3 million? Well, that'd be 14 new buses every year. It'd be 13 new chillers every year. It would be a digital device for every student, K-12, every year. It would be the entire operational expense, bus drivers, assistants, tires, fuel, mechanics for the transportation department for a whole year. It would be 25 custodians with family health insurance. Or if we had unlimited resources for athletics, it would be lighting for softball, baseball, soccer, plus JV softball, field flip, and a start on the JV baseball field. Every year.
I think you're trying to say it's a lot of money.
The state sets these up, these caps, right?
They do. But, you know, here, well, I'll just wait. We'll talk about rainy day fund in a few minutes. Rainy day fund has to go through the same appropriation process. They don't receive any tax money. The rainy day can be funded through transfers from the education or the operations fund. The money can be spent directly from the rainy day fund, or transfers can be made from the rainy day fund back to the education or operations fund. Our rainy day fund balance in June 30th of 2017 was $4.6 million. Then we moved some money in there, back in there for expenses we made. It rose to about $5.3 million. On June 30th, we were at $2.3 million. And we have committed to projects about $1.3 million for the high school fieldhouse. The expenditures included the solar panel. I'm not saying those are bad investments. Nobody should take that. But we are tapping into some of the resources that we had built up over time for winter rate. We're still going to have about $1 million or more. But, you know, we need to be mindful that the days of having four and a half or $5 million in rainy day fund are gone. The solar panel, I thought you might like. I just used an average between last year and this year of what the current kilowatt rate per hour is. So in August of last year, we used 393 kilowatt hours. This year, we use 226. That is a savings of $16,000 in the month of August alone on our electric bill. You know, I, I think that's pretty powerful, that we are seeing that, that return. Now, when we get to winter, we're not going to obviously see that. And, you know, once we get a little more history of the performance services wants to come back and walk through some of this with you. But I wanted to give you a quick average of where I thought we, we were. We use the rainy day fund for the circuit breaker impact, the operations fund. Our cash balance is not even going to be enough to cover the entire circuit breaker impact. It is also a source for the education fund expenses should we need to make some reductions or see reductions to our revenue. For example, the change in funding from enrollment in September to February. Again, I want this, this, this picture to stick with you of how, how that is impacting us. We, we need, we need to change who we are. And that's, that's not popular. We need to start meeting with the finance committee and having some serious conversations about how we're going to make significant savings to the corporation. I'm worried about where you'll be in 2022 and 2023 if we don't start making meaningful changes now. I, you do, you want to make changes in staffing through attrition, not go back to the days, you know, it was before I got here, but I know at one time, Kim talks about George looking through the hallways, handing out ref notices or whatever in the streets. We don't, we don't, we're not, we're not there, and we don't want to get there. But we need to focus on how we can operate more efficiently and what changes we can make to still give our students the level of support that we give them now, but make some meaningful cost-saving changes.
So with the circuit breaker property tax caps looking at for 2019, we go by 2018, whatever it is, 1.2 million, 1.344, we made up that difference obviously through the rainy day fund. Is that what you're saying?
And, and monies that we have budgeted that we did not spend.
Okay.
And we had some cash balance that we've rolled over, and our cash balance will continue to go, go down. Right now, we have money, a little bit of money built into emergency CPF. Luckily, we've hardly spent any of it this year. Some of the projects that we budgeted for came in at less. So we're always trying to So we're always trying to cost save. But, you know, we're spending down some of those funds also.
Yeah.
So.
So you're saying we feel that there's going to be, I'm going to say, you know, maybe like a financial crunch within 2022 if we continue at the rate we're going?
If you continue to do this and we do not look for cost savings opportunities and our enrollment continues to decline, you're going to have some issues.
Okay. But the property tax caps or the circuit breaker there, it doesn't apply necessarily to the education fund. It's more the operation fund, or is it both?
The circuit breaker, the property tax caps.
Obviously, it's only.
Do not impact the education fund directly. However, if you're transferring money from the education fund to the operations fund and you aren't making changes across the board to save, you're not going to have those resources to do that.
Okay.
And we have been making changes. We reduced three teaching positions this year through attrition. We made some changes in support staff. Our HR decision was a significant cost savings with Brian. So we're trying to do that, but we've got to continue to look at ways. You know, we have buildings that aren't being fully utilized due to declining enrollment, and we're going to have to tackle that issue.
It's not popular when you talk about.
No, it's not.
Red line.
It's what's necessary.
Moving students. But if you keep putting it off, you're going to be forced. And so.
Well, Jane, no.
That's the seed I want to plant is let's do it now. Start working towards that on a plan so we don't impact our current staff and students. We take care of things like we've done with attrition and that sort of thing.
I was just going to say, so we're to the point where we can't put things off anymore?
Yeah, and I don't think this just hit us all at once. What, what, we don't have the huge rainy day fund that we had because that would have allowed a couple of years or a year more of opportunity for change. But because we've spent some of that down on good projects and we're going to see a return on our investment for the solar panels, but we paid cash for it. And I believe that was a good decision to pay cash. But it's going to take a time to get that money back, back to us. And so if we start now, it doesn't become a crisis.
So declining enrollment is really what's pushing the difficulty for us, right?
Yeah, but I'm just speaking freely for me.
No, I want you to, yes.
You have class sizes with 12 or 13 kids and you have classes across town with 23 kids. That's not fair. It's not equitable. And it's not, it's not good business. It might be good education to not move these families from one location to another. But I'm not assured that you're going to be able to avoid addressing that issue.
Appreciate your sincerity. Thank you.
Any questions?
I think it's important that the people watching this understand where we're coming from because I think there's been a real problem with lack of transparency with these kinds of issues in the corporation over the years. And I don't think the general public has understood, and I think you've done a wonderful job of explaining it, you know, what the issues are. This is the amount of money that we have. We have to spend it more. No, we don't like to do these things, but it's like the sacrifices that you make in your own family. You have to make financial decisions that are going to impact your family in a positive way. And I think that they had a tendency to look at the school corporation as this, well, they got all the money that they need. And yeah, we do, but we don't have it for steak anymore. It's more hamburger time, just as families go through too.
Well, the one thing that I do want to stress though is it is important for us to maintain an appropriate wage for our staff members. And so a lot of what, you know, drives this is I want us to be able to continue to provide raises to our employees and contributions towards health insurance and the benefits that we've maintained before. That, our solution should not be, oh, we're going to give minimal raises or we're not giving raises. That's what some school corporations have done. We have an opportunity to change, I believe, and still be able to do that because we want highly qualified teachers. And we should pay for that and support staff. I'm not just picking on teachers. It's hard, you know, that's the lion's share of our angle.
And the teacher's market obviously is incredibly competitive right now because there are just not that many out there. So if we don't, we're between a rock and a hard place. If we don't offer them the things, then we don't get the people that we need. Then we don't really provide what the best possible educational experience for our kids. And we certainly don't want IPS classes that have 55 kids in them and still can't find teachers. So I think we have to be very, I think the public and everybody really needs to understand the seriousness of this and that we're all working together to try to minimize the negative impact on the corporation as a whole. Keep our quality teachers, keep the people. But with the full recognition that there's going to be some difficult decisions that are going to have to be made because we simply can't do things the way we used to do them.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't leave us, Jane.
You cannot retire.
All right, now we will move on to summer school reports. Ms. Grisaro and Mr. Judd.
Thank you, Board President. I do have Mr. Judd here to talk about CHS summer school. But in your package, you can see that we also highlighted a couple of the elementary programs that we were able to also have this summer. And the first one is Jump Start. In collaboration with the Fayette County Foundation, we were again able to offer our Jump Start for our incoming kindergarteners. We had 154 kindergarteners attend Jump Start, and it was held on the week of July 22nd from 8:30 to 12:00. We also held summer school for grade three. The focus for grade three is still on the IREDA assessment and those students who needed additional support in passing that state assessment. We conducted it in conjunction with the CHS summer school. It was held at Connerville Middle School. We had 34 or 33 students who were asked to attend based on their spring IREDA scores. And we were fortunate to have 20 more additional students pass during the summer IREDA three test. So kudos to those teachers that worked with those third graders. Beth Fuller has done it for the last couple of years, and she does a really nice job. And Jessica Miller, who is a teacher at Grandview, also participated as the second teacher for the IREDA three. And Yvonne Dunkle. So all three of them did a fabulous job. In the last two years, we've had on average about 19 kids pass it in the summer session. So our goal still is to have all of them pass the first time. But sometimes kids need a little extra help and support. And so as long as we get them through that summer testing, we're pretty happy with those results. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Judd if he would come forward and kind of go over some of the options and experiences that high school students were offered.
Good evening. Before I start, my report will be brief. I would like to thank Terry Miller and the technology staff. They are, they get us out of a bunch of sticky situations that we can't figure out on our own. I remember 35, 36 years ago, when I first came back to Connerville to teach, there was not one computer in the building. Within a couple of years, we were playing Oregon Trail on Apple II.
Mark still plays that.
I like it. I think it's great.
But I think our kids have no idea how fortunate they are to have the technology system that they have every day. They take it for granted because they also have it in their hands, usually on their cell phones. But I appreciate what you do, Terry. Janie, I appreciate the work you've done on the grant, the safety grant to get that front gate paid for. That is awesome. And your advice for fiscally responsible decisions tonight is very well received by me. So I will go on to talk about what I'm here for. We had summer school at CMS again, and I would like to thank Beth Denham and her staff for hosting us. That is not an easy job while your custodians are trying to clean your building and you have 135, actually more than that, counting third grade students running around your building for at least four hours a day. Our rule, if you remember, is we allow one absence in summer school because the kids are only there 19 days. There are always exceptions. If we get towards the end and there's a student who has been there every day and has a really good grade, we will allow them to make up some time if they have, you know, if they have to take a family trip that's not planned or if they're ill, we allow them to do that. We offered English 9, 10, and 11 this summer. That is more just for credit recovery. Those kids that we allow in there for summer are students who have already failed those classes. And rather than have them take English 9 and 10 at the same time or 11 and, 10 and 11 at the same time, we hope that they can get that credit in summertime, and so we offer that. We had two sections of PE, which is, it's a little bit down. We usually have three sections. But due to scheduling and being at the middle school, we could not run three sections. Government was also offered, and econ was offered. Those two classes are mainly for juniors and seniors who are hoping to have some flexibility in their schedules, their junior and senior years. They're not usually students who have failed it before because those are senior classes. And so that allows them to take maybe that extra TV class that they want to take when they're a senior or that extra dual credit class that they know they won't be able to get in their schedule if we don't take it in the summertime. We offered Algebra I and II also as credit recovery. No students took that class or an English class who had never had it before. Just in 19 days, you can't get everything in that needs to be done so that they can go on to the next semester's work. And then for the first time, we offered a basic skills class. It is an elective credit. And a lot of eighth grade students and some high school students were allowed to take that class. The eighth grade students, traditionally, Beth had her own summer school program. But the last few years, we've been inviting eighth graders to go ahead and come to high school program. And if they haven't had any success and maybe weren't going to be promoted to the high school, if they worked hard and showed success in summer school, then they get to come to the high school. And that has proven to be very successful. And Beth and her staff helped with those kids, checking on them every day. And if they weren't there, they would get a call or they would actually go after them and get them and make sure they got there. So I appreciate that.
Randy, you taught that class?
Joy Davis.
Okay. Would you open that up to any of the stuff? Any other teachers that teach that class?
I would rather it be one of our special ed staff. If one of those does not apply, then yes, we could open it up to a general ed person. Joy and the other special ed teachers all have basic skills during the school year, so they're used to teaching. Basically, what they're working on, reading and writing skills. And they earn a high school credit for doing that. On-site summer school, we had 138 students this summer. 131 of them got credits, so we had a 95% pass rate, which is the highest we've had for several years. Summer band participants, we had 54 this year. That's up six from last year, so our band program is growing. Those uniforms are going to start being used. Summer SAE, Gabe Nobby, he had 23 students who earned credits with him. And they worked most of the summer on their projects up through the fair and even the first couple of weeks of school, Gabe was still waiting for some kids to finish their projects. So 23 of them completed. So onsite in Fayette County, we had quite a few students earn credits. Now, we also allow our students to sign up for online summer school. If you remember, what we like to do, it costs $250 per student credit. We like to pass 50 of that on to the students and their families so that they have some skin in the game. And we had 154 students take 183 classes this summer, and they earned 168 credits. We only had 15 summer school students who failed online summer school. There's a very proud principal who emails parents and students during the summer when they're, you know, it's all in the kid. You've got to get up and do your work. And so there are deadlines that they have to meet or they are automatically dropped. And there are deadlines they have to meet to finish up their material. So I sent lots of emails reminding those kids, and I think they paid off. So that's a pretty good success rate for summer schools. So overall, it was a very successful summer. We're getting credits and moving towards graduating these students in four years. Any questions?
Randy, has the, and both of us, and I know Mark has, who survived the old six-week summer school with the two and a half hours a day. Do you find that the four hours a day over the shorter period works better? Or is it a mixed bag?
It's a mixed bag. Depends on the kid, how seriously they want to take it. If both systems work, I don't have any data on how many credits we were giving away or students were earning in the old days when we would have two, two and a half hour sessions. A lot of the kids did stay for both those sessions and.
Yeah, they could pick up, they could pick up.
Pick up two.
Two credits, yeah.
But it was a five-week session, sometimes six weeks.
Sometimes six weeks. It was from, until mid-July typically.
Yes.
I taught both of those programs, and the kids surprisingly do better than we think they will. They're pretty good.
They're flexible.
Adjusting, and yeah, more so than we are.
Absolutely.
Make great for that.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we'll move on to report items. Superintendent Discussion Group reports. Principal Director reports.
Good evening. Just want to come in and update you on our new buses so far. The five new buses, we have put cameras on. Out of 23 days of school, not counting today, we have 19 bus violations so far. So they are doing their job. So we send those right down to the police and they issue a citation and appear in court. I haven't got the amount yet, so hopefully I'll have that by next board meeting. But they are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So thank you for helping out there. And while I'm here, I want to thank the city police. And if you see any of them, please thank them. They have been so successful at helping us. I don't know how many stopbar violations they've got behind, not just our bus, the ones with the new cameras on it. So it's been a great thing. They got to grant money and they have support tremendously. So if you see any of them, thank them.
Thank you, Eric. Seeing no one else, Director of Human Resources report, Brian. Director of Finance reporting.
I just wanted to give the board a little update on where we think we have finished out the magic moments.
Oh, okay.
I think we're going to have to contribute about another $8,000 to get their fund back in the block and close it out on top of that. So it's where we ended the year. It is what it is. You know, I know letting go of that was a difficult decision. But as we've talked about earlier, I don't know that we have the resources to have continued to subsidize that. But we will be making that transfer to get that fund back in the block and close it out.
Thank you very much. Assistant Superintendent report, Kim.
I just want to give a shout out to Kelly McCollum. We have all of our preschoolers in school and all on the same day. And she did a wonderful job of coordinating them, especially with the moves and kind of coordinating the traffic at Maplewood. But it was, I think Scott and I have been in all of those preschool classrooms. We love them. We like to go quite often. But it's just amazing how quickly those kids take to those teachers and the learning that's going on in those pre-classrooms. So just kudos to that staff and to Kelly and her team.
Thank you. Assistant's report.
251 preschoolers.
Wow. It's a lot of three and four-year-olds.
Yeah. So that's exciting. And, you know, I've talked to Kim. We're going to track these kids and see how they do with NWA and these assessments and on IREDA three, you know, because I think this is going to pay a huge dividend. And I'm sure with the kindergarten jump start, we're getting the bang for the buck with that. So we reduced it to one week this time, and I believe we're losing some funding from the foundation for that. So we're going to look at some creative ways to get kids acclimated. But this preschool program with that many kids is going to give a lot of those kids a full year jump start because it's operating out of school. So that's really exciting. If you ever want to come in and visit, give us a yell. It's fun stuff, and they will talk to you later. It's fun stuff, and they will talk to you later. You hear all kinds of fun stories from preschoolers. I want to thank Janie. You know, our district has been a financially healthy district, and it still is. But it is because of board leadership, administrative leadership, and having one of the best finance directors out there. So thank you, Janie.
Thank you.
And now for the good of the cause. Anybody have anything you want to bring up tonight? Okay. Well, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chris.
Chris?
I'm so moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign.